Did that scare you?
Yes.
Did that scare you?
It scared me.
Thanks, John.
Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Pittsburgh Public Schools Regular School Committee meeting, November 20th, 2023. No need for executive session at this time. Dr. Knight, if you would lead us in the salute to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No need for executive session at this time. School committee members and student reports, school committee chair report, nothing to report at this time. Resource committee.
Resource committee, I do not have the notes yet from the secretary, but we did meet this past week, and I don't know if there's anything, Mr. Roach, that was outstanding that you might mention?
I don't think so. I think we have several topics on there that we'll review tonight, and donations and that type of thing, so I think we can move forward.
Any questions? Concerns, comments? Seeing none? School building needs? Mr. Stevens.
School building needs, again, the same thing, but we did meet, and a couple of things I do remember, that the windows are all finished at Long Joe, and we were glad to get that done. We also had an update on an opening for two custodians in the system, so people out there watching, we're still looking to hire, so. And there were things on enrollment, our enrollment was 53-62, and when we passed our policy on kindergarten, starting school, we gained six new students when we did that. There were 192 immigrants in our system now, and 96 came this summer, which gave us a total of 53-62. Those are all I have on my notes.
Any questions? Concerns, comments? Seeing none? Policy committee chairman Horgan is not with us at this time. Student support committee.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any questions for the chair? No, seeing none. School personnel committee, that would be me, and there's nothing to report at this time. Or executive committee. Student representative, thank you.
Good evening, fellow school committee members. It is so great to be with you all again today. The Thanksgiving game is coming up, and to start off the countdown, FHS started the Thanksgiving food drive, which began on November 7th and ends tomorrow, November 21st. Pittsburgh High Class of 24 has also been selling T-shirts along with lemonade for the Thanksgiving coming up this Wednesday. And MCAS retesting started last week for our students who had not passed English or Math MCAS. Seven FHS students were also able to have a sit-down with the superintendent and answer the questions he had for us about our school and district overall. Goodrich Academy had an amazing turnout for their open house, in which 86% of families attended. Their new trimester starts on November 27th. For anyone watching who is interested in Goodrich High, please call them to schedule a meeting. Memorial Middle School participated in a student superintendent forum, where they also got to chat with the superintendent about their school and any issues they are having. Eighth-grade students are starting up their pathways, generation citizen civic project, and have decided on having a supply drive for their local animal shelters. Seventh-grade students at Long Joe Middle School are also having a field trip to Amherst College next week, and recently just had their fall school-wide dance this past week, which is a great success as well. Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none. I also want to take a moment to mention that Representative Kuschmerich is joining us this evening. Thank you, Representative, along with Beth Walsh from Senator Cronin's office. Thank you. Approval of minutes of previous school committee meeting, November 6th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, as you may ask. Thank you. Communications. I don't believe this. Is there anyone, I don't believe there's anyone wishing to make a communication or public comment? Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Thank you. Moving on, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we jump into the agenda for this evening, I'd like to recognize someone in the audience this evening. Our newly-elected school committee member, Deb Jeffries, is here. Deb Jeffries, congratulations on being elected.
Yeah, our condolences, Deb. I mean, congratulations, I'm sorry. Let's get that wrong.
Is there anything you'd like to say? I'm sorry.
I look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you. All right, let's dive into our first agenda item. Tonight, we have Representative Michael Kuschmerich and Beth Walsh from Senator Cronin's office with us this evening to recognize one of our staff members, who is a recipient of the Latino Education Award. Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, superintendent, administration, school committee members, thank you for taking us out of turn and for giving us this opportunity to recognize truly one of your own and one of your absolute best in our school system. Each year, Latinos for Education, a statewide advocacy group, puts out a call for nominations to recognize 200 of the most talented, gifted, and dedicated Latino educators across the Commonwealth. And this year, when reaching out to the administration for potential nominees, they came back with a unanimous and resounding selection of Millet Rosa. And reading the bio, I was just absolutely struck and amazed by somebody who was willing to go just above and beyond to serve our students. Someone who uses her bilingual skills and gifts to help bridge the gap between the newest students in our school districts, our immigrant students, and those English-language learners, those who maybe need a little extra help bridging the divide between home and school. She goes above and beyond each and every day. She works later hours than would typically be required or even asked, and she does it with satisfaction, and she does it to help students, and she does it to help transform lives and families. And if that's not the composition and the makeup of a truly gifted educator and somebody who is truly dedicated to their profession and just understands what it takes to get students over the finish line, I don't know who is better qualified to be recognized. So both Senator Cronin and I have citations from the Commonwealth for you, so I'd like to welcome you up here, and then here's the awkward part, where we get to read about you. And so I have a citation, and then I'm going to turn this over to Beth Walsh, and then we'll turn it over to you. All right. So I have from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Millet Rosa and recognition of your outstanding work at McKay Elementary School," excuse me, "and being recognized as the third Worcester District's Latino educator of 2023. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 20th day of November 2023, this was issued at the State House in Boston, Massachusetts, signed by Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the Massachusetts House, and offered by myself." Congratulations.
Thank you.
Beth Walsh from Senator Cronin's office.
Thank you, Representative Kuschmerich. If Senator Cronin were here, he would want me to congratulate you on your amazing contributions to all of your students. As Representative Kuschmerich said, you go above and beyond every single day, and I know it's because of the love that you have for the students and for teaching. So on behalf of Senator Cronin, this is a citation from the State Senate, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Millet Rosa in recognition of the joyous occasion of being named the Latinos for Education Exceptional Latino Educator Honoree, and be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, signed by President of the Senate Karen Spilka, and offered by State Senator John Jacobson." Thank you.
If you'd like to.
I'm just truly honored to have received this award today. My passion is teaching, and I will continue to do what I have done for the last 20-plus years with my students and any student, all the students in the district. I obviously deserve to be recognized as students that need to be loved and cared for, and teaching is something that I will forever do, and I am very grateful to be considered. Thank you so much.
Take a photo, Mayor and superintendent, if you would mind coming around. And I have to say, not only with humility, but a single mom of three children, breast cancer survivor, I mean, I think on those merits alone, you deserve an award.
Thank you.
All right, maybe we'll go.
Thank you, Ms. Rosa. We appreciate all that you do for our students every day.
May I say a comment? It's Kuschmerich and Beth, it's so nice to see you here. You lift us up, you round it out, you know? We have citizens, we have voted-in members and students, and we have local officials. It's really nice. Visit us more often, I would love to see you. Thank you.
Felicidades, Ms. Rosa.
Any other questions? All right, moving on. So next item is the Better Together Summit. On Thursday, October 26th, a group of Pittsburgh parents, home liaisons, and administrators attended the Better Together Summit in Marlboro, Mass. The Better Together Summit is designed to give family members and educators an opportunity to share ideas about school success and how to make our educational environments a better experience for students and families. This evening, we have Ms. Eva Kelly and Ms. Luisa Fernandez here with a group of parents to tell us about the Better Together Summit. Come on up, Mrs. Kelly and Luisa is not coming up.
She doesn't want to come up?
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, no, you have to come up.
All right.
You have to come up.
We wanted to share this wonderful summit.
Luisa, you have to come up.
You have to.
Line up. That's right. We want to do all we can to embarrass you, so just get up there. You're not getting away with that. All right.
We just wanted to share this wonderful event with you all. This is the second year that the Pittsburgh Public Schools has sent a group of staff and parents to the summit. It's sponsored by the Department of Education. In terms of assistant superintendent, Cologne and I were able to present to other superintendents about the journey Pittsburgh Public Schools has had in our development of our family engagement program, and as we know, Luisa is a key part of that. So she was able to talk some families into coming, some parents. Do you want to introduce our families that are here?
Sure. I drove all the way there in the minivan with them, with the parents and some staff members. So we have Maisie Castillo here today. Come, Maisie, she wants to say a few words. Been happy to become a part of professional. She's taking our English classes as well, so she's going to talk about her experience.
Hello, nice to meet you.
Hello.
Hello. First, I want to say that I am a student from Pittsburgh Public School in ESL program, and sometimes when I'm speaking English, I feel nervous. But this night, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to participate in Better Together Conference, because for me, it was an amazing opportunity to learn about research, education, family, and school together things. I think that it's very important to have more space like that, because it is important to me, like mom, to improve, to help my children, and thanks, Luisa, because does an amazing work at connecting, helping, and motivating people like me, and always, I'm very grateful. Thanks so much. Sorry about my nerves.
And now we have Dawn Prince. Yeah, she came with us, too. Thank you, Dawn, for coming tonight.
That's right, grab her. Get her up there.
Hi, I'm Dawn Prince. I am very thankful to be chosen to go to this conference. It was very enjoyable and learning, a very good learning experience. Excuse me, nerves. I enjoyed it, and I learned a few things, and I was introduced to many different people there, other families, other educators, and I did take two of the seminars there. One was for the Google platform and learning that our schools currently use the Google platform, and I think that's a very wonderful program to have. I know that my three children love it. The other is that I took the seminar on family engagement, and this was the most interesting one. Learning from most families that were in attendance, the biggest need is the language barrier, which parents in the school, language barrier in the parents in the school system. I am thankful that there was a woman there who could translate for me, because I do not speak Spanish, and the majority of them were Spanish, who were in this family seminar. And a lot of the parents stated that their children, who have this learning, you know, the language gap, are normally put in a corner with headphones to learn separately from the other children that are there. And I am happy and proud that Pittsburgh Public Schools does not do that. So that was nice to hear, and nice to know that our school system didn't do that. And the families also stated that they were very thankful for the programs, for the food, for the free breakfast, lunch, and sometimes dinner for the programs, and I wanted to make sure the nutritionist staff at the Pittsburgh Public Schools is thanked and know that we all appreciate them.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just sent this email. Mr. Thompson knows it, and it's hard, and I'm trying to cut it down. I also learned a lot in the point of, I learned that I wanted to take, after doing these, I wanted to take a grant program, grant-writing program, which Ms. Luisa hooked me up, and I took one class already, as well as going, talking with the, I don't remember what she would be called, but the teacher who taught the Google platform said that since I know computers and I'm well with them, that I should possibly go for a Google certification class, and that is what I learned and what I plan to do.
Thanks, Ellen.
And I'm very thankful that everybody had me go. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Any questions about the summit?
I just want to say, I want to thank both of you, both parents and the other ones who attended, to take the time to participate in an event that I think is very, obviously very beneficial to you and I'm sure all the other parents, and to see, in some ways, learn about what some children go through in a classroom because of a language barrier. And I'm glad that Eva and Luisa were able to recruit some of you to go to this event, and obviously, it looks like you both benefited from being here, so thanks for being involved.
If I'd like to just add something, just another angle, slant at what we just experienced, you being parents of students in the public schools, we here represent you, and it's a pleasure to hear you rather than hearing about you. So very glad that you came up and participated. We need to see you, we need to hear you, and admire you and work with you, okay? Thank you.
Diddle.
I just want to say thank you as well for taking time out of your busy schedules and to make it a priority, because there's a lot of things going on, so to make this a priority, to be able to not only be yourself educated, but to expose yourself to new ideas and new resources. So I just want to say thank you, because I'm sure that you'll be able to share that with other parents, and that's how things grow, that's how things happen, that's how a team is built, that's how a community is built, when we share information with each other, and all of us begin to grow together. So thank you so much, I really appreciate you.
But I just want to say, I thought that you, the last speaker, was a native Spanish speaker, and I said, boy, she really learned a lot. Her English is beautiful.
I was going to say, we have one more parent.
So this is Mr. Eric Boomey? Did I say that correctly? Tell me. How did I say it? He also attended the conference, and he'd like to share his thoughts about it with you. Thank you.
Good evening, school committee members, and thanks for having me. Appreciate, Luisa, for inviting me to the meeting. I was part of the Better Together Summit, and again, I appreciate her for the transportation. That was very helpful. I didn't have to water myself, to bring myself to Marlboro. She helped with the transportation for parents that were available to go to the summit. And I really liked the parent engagement summit, it provided a good platform for parents who the school members know better than I do, that they are members, they are partners in educating their children. So it was great being there and see how different ways in which you can change the mentality of parents or get families more involved in school education. And I think I learned very a lot. If I take one example, for one of the seminars that I attended, which was more about equity imperative or learning how to accommodate different views or different backgrounds, and in this, which I think of my own feedback, which is highly diverse, and how diversity helps in the school milieu, in increasing school success rate in going into universities, the percentage of students that go into universities, how it's important to make our milieu more diverse, because teachers like me do really make a difference when students see teachers like me, and their performance gets much, much better. So I think this was, for me, a great seminar and something, I would say DSE did a very great, great job to bring parents together for that, and I was very happy to attend the seminar. Thank you.
Thank you as well, sir, for attending the conference, taking time out of your busy schedule to go to be a part of this great event. So I appreciate you, and I appreciate you making a sacrifice to be a part of the team. Thank you.
By the way, you got to show everybody your shoes. See this guy's shoes? Get up, you got to show him your shoes. Come on, you got to tell him. Those are wild, man. I love those. Really. Nice job. Where'd you get those? See me after.
You may get that.
I know.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on. Next, I'd like to invite Ms. Dawn Marshall from the high school and her students to come up to talk about the robotics competition that will be held in Connecticut.
School committee members, hi. I'm Dawn Marshall, I'm a teacher at Pittsburgh High. I teach the Competitive Honors Robotics Team class, it's a full-year class. I got some representatives here. Mr. Roach, we started this 10 years ago, anyway. So we started off with VEX Robotics Platform, and now we're moving on to aerial competition, drone competitions. So there's only one event in southern New England, and that's in Connecticut, and we have four teams made up of the existing six teams of the VEX Robotics Platform, and we're eager to go and give it a try. But anyone like, is there any questions?
You were the class that the prior, the previous lieutenant governor, Alito, came into your class, I remember that, yeah.
A different stage that was for the, what is it, the manufacturing career pathways?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Grants, yep. And that's going strong as well, so we're getting organized with that.
That's great.
But that's a little different than the robotics. Robotics isn't in that platform, isn't in that.
Okay. I mean, you guys aren't doing like the BattleBots thing, right?
They like to.
But you could if you wanted to, right? Yeah, okay. You know, it's high-level stuff, I mean, you know.
So, yeah, I mean, it's basically the same platform as what we've been doing now. Each competition is made up of different combinations of teams that come together for the event, either you're on a blue team or a red team, and you're paired up with anyone who's, any team that's there randomly. So you have to communicate with other team, with your team that you don't know, to figure out the strategy for that two-minute competition. You also need to program your robot for a 15-second autonomous period where you don't have control of it, so it's programming involved. Yeah, so I like, it's a great platform and a great, great class for anyone who wants to get into engineering, into robotics, committee meetings, you have to go to funding, you have to get a hold of, of course, working with your team. They can talk about that. We just came off of a very disappointing competition on Saturday, but we just weren't prepared enough, we didn't, you know, so I think they learned a lot out of that.
I have three questions. Are you going to give a demonstration tonight?
Next time we have to question something.
Fly around.
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure how many kids would be able to show up.
The second question is, what are the young people's names, and what grade are they in? What year are they in?
I'll let them introduce themselves, and then they can tell you why they're in the class.
My name is Dylan Vu, and I just want to say that this is probably one of my most favorite classes I've ever attended. I feel like it really, it really built, it really built the way I think, because it's a really new environment, where I had to use my hands, communicate with a team, and really get involved with, like, meshing these things together and hoping it works together. Even when you fail, you just get back up. Like this Saturday, we had zero wins and six losses, but I feel like this was a really great growing experience for me, because it really showed me how amazing these other people are and how I can learn from them and improve my robot. I really love this class.
Well said. Well said.
Hope.
It's terrific.
I hope we can just, like, build it more, especially at my school. We don't have a big community there, but I wish we do, so it'd be more fun for everyone.
Do you need something? Is there something that, is there something that you need? Any help of any kind? Huh?
Space.
Mr. Roach probably remember that, but almost been 10 years ago, the presentation was made at Memorial, and the kids did do a demonstration, like Mrs. Reynolds asked, you remember that?
Yes.
They did do.
Now we're going to the aerial drones, so they're just little drones that fly around, the same thing. Not as much building, but more team. Not as much building, but more teamwork and more programming involved, instead of the, the actual mechanical engineering. So a different platform for different students.
If you'd like, we can do to help, please ask.
Yes.
Ask.
We've had some pretty good funding for a number of years, we had a nice grant come in this past summer, so we kind of, I think we're all set right now, but I'll keep you in mind.
The other young people introduce themselves?
My name is Gabriela Diotta, and I'm in the 11th grade, I'm a junior. And the reason I took this class was just because I wanted to get a better understanding of STEM, or just a base to learn off, to create a career in STEM. And it's been really helpful, because we've been learning a lot about teamwork, we've been learning a lot about coding, we've been learning about all that kind of stuff that would really help in a career if I really wanted to go into engineering.
My name is Alexander Faye, and I also, of course, want to get into engineering in the future, I hope to go to some sort of technical school. And I actually wasn't able to get this class initially, but I wanted it so much that I actually signed up to do independent study for it. So even though I don't really have official, like, direct instruction, or like classmates, like, around me, I think I still do pretty well on my own. But I really like the class, I think it's a great way to improve your engineering skill, and a large part of many engineering jobs is how well you can do things. So I think it's really good experience for a future job that I have.
Ms. Marshall, how many in the class?
Right now, I have 12.
Are you limited, you must be limited, right, as to how many you can have?
Yeah. And Alex is an independent study, he's not even with us during that time, so, so, yeah, yes.
So you've probably got more kids that want to be in that you can't fit in.
I'd like to think.
Yeah.
But I vet all the students who are in, because it costs money. It costs money for registration for teams, it costs, we got six teams, we got 10 teams if we count them all together. So it costs money for the teams, it costs money to register for each event, it costs money for the equipment.
What kind of, what kind of money? What kind of money?
Well, we got the van, I drove that the other day. My truck has better suspension, that's okay. But, yeah, it was a cost $70 per event, so I got six teams doing the math in my head, you know. But we don't have a bus to pay for anymore, which is kind of.
Doesn't sound like it's overly burdensome, I mean, not for you.
We tried.
Please, please ask this guy right here.
I've had very good support, and I told, I told Mr. Roach when he started it, that it was gonna cost money.
That's right, this is important, sure.
And it takes a while to get to this point, and it's a very diverse team, we've got, we've got 10, from a lot of cultures.
The, I just want to comment, because the enthusiasm of these students is unusual, but it's what I would expect of people seeking a fine education. They like to verbalize, and they're excited about it. We need this, we need this. So these gentlemen are saying, "Ask," don't hesitate to ask, or, space and money, space and money, we've got that.
I don't know how we're gonna solve the space problem, but certainly we've had great support financially lately, so it's been very good. We've got, well, we got a couple of POs that I'm waiting to get through right now, but I think that's just needs approved, I don't know. Did you see them?
I did not. Sure, we'll check tomorrow.
They should come out of, so I don't know.
I just want to say, thank you for leading the way in this particular project, but I'm so excited to hear the energy and enthusiasm from the students, because that means that they have bought in, they have committed themselves to being active participants in something that's constructive, and they already, they already have made up their mind, they want to go this track in terms of career. So that means that they're doing some research on their own, so it has to start somewhere. And I want to say, I thank you, this is why we do what we do. This is why we do what we do, because we, we want to make sure that our kids have an opportunity for exposure. Now, they, they started at a small level, and I like the young man that said, "Yeah, they lost six events or whatever on Saturday," but it taught him something. So now he's passionate about going to the next level, you know, so that kind, that kind of passion will spill off onto some, some schoolmates of yours. They see your energy and they see your enthusiasm, you know, what is there you're so excited about? Then you bring them with you, and then we present a problem for Mr. Roach and Mr. Thompson to fund, that you got 50 kids now that want to join this unique program. And so I really, really appreciate you, Ms. Marshall, and your leadership and guidance on this, but to the students, thank you, you know, hang in there, you know what I mean, I'm really, really excited, I can't wait, I can't wait for a demonstration as well. I was like the mayor, I want to see you, like, those robots be beating up each other, that's what you want.
Thinking about bringing a drone, but we really.
We can get you back here. We'll give you a couple months to come back.
We'll be better by then, we'll have something.
I just want to say, I mean, obviously, what you're interested in is the robotics part and the engineering, but all of you, including Ms. Marshall, there are other skills that you're learning that will be applicable in almost any field, being able to communicate, tell what your plan is, that the fact that you, you work up with other people who you meet for the first time, to do something, to solve something, to, to be able to state your case and realize that, well, maybe her case is better than mine, so let's go that way and get this done, because you have a deadline to meet. I think all things that are applicable in life and in a career. And what you said, the woman sitting in the back row, her shirt says, "Take chances, make mistakes." And as you said, that's, that's how you learn. And I, I remember hearing an interview, Michaela Schiffern, who's a World Cup skier, and she was expected to do really well in the last Olympics, and for a number of reasons, she didn't do well at all. And the thing I remember from her, from her interview, she said, "Just because you fail doesn't mean you're a failure." And she now holds the record for men and women winning most World Cup ski tournaments, and she's still skiing, and I'm really proud of all of you and your classmates of what you want to accomplish, and wish you the very best when you head down to Connecticut. I know you will represent Pittsburgh very, very well. Thank you very much.
Let us know how you do.
I won't tell you about Saturday, well, we told you about Saturday. We'll send out a picture. So we're approved?
That will come up tonight for approval, unless you want to prove it now.
Can we take that out of order? You want to do that now?
Make a motion to approve action item 23-323, approve the superintendent's recommendation to allow Pittsburgh High School students to attend a robotics competition in Connecticut.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. Congratulations.
Go get them.
Thank you.[1065.83][1065.83](Applause)
All right.
I gotta get them to school tomorrow.
That's right, it's a school night.
Time to go home. Thank you, Dawn. All right, moving, but get a picture. All right, moving on to the next item. On Wednesday, November 8th to Friday, November 10th, Mr. Stevens and I attended the Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Association of School Superintendents Annual Joint Conference in the Cape. During the conference, I attended several sessions about science of reading, chapter 70, state funding for public education, communicating your district's strategic plan to stakeholders, Medicaid cost-based reimbursement programs for school districts, long-term planning and for equity, and strategic communication. Also during the conference, I heard several transformative educators speak, such as Commissioner Jeff Riley, Massachusetts Secretary of Education, Dr. Patrick Tatwiler, in addition to CEO of the Disruptive Equity Education Project, Dr. Darnissa Amonte Jackson. So I just wanted to thank the school committee for providing me and allowing me to attend the conference. I learned a lot, I was able to network with several other superintendents that have similar demographics in addition to similar profiles as Pittsburgh, and it was a very beneficial experience, thank you so much. Mr. Stevens, would you like to add anything?
I will, a couple of things. Sally Craig, City Councilor, former school committee member, I think this is about fourth year now, we presented a workshop on pet therapy. Pittsburgh is the leader in pet therapy in schools, in Massachusetts, we were the first, and still we're putting on workshops for other school districts throughout the Commonwealth. So that went very well. And I attended many workshops, but all of the speakers that, Mr. Thompson, but one of the things, they, Mr. Yu, it was a couple of years, a year ago, they nominated you to be the delegate. Well, I wish they had done it this year for you, because it was almost four hours long, and there were eight resolutions, and it was very, very interesting. Resolution number one was full funding, full stable funding for Metco. The second, and that passed. Resolution number two regarding investigation and recommendations for transportation bidding procedures, that passed. Resolution three on regional transportation failed. Resolution four, diversity, equity, and inclusion was tabled after, that one probably went for two hours. Melrose has a DEI program, and it's made up of a committee, which I sat in on, and I liked it very much. The argument that was taking place in the delegates' meeting was whether to have a DEI person or DEI committee, or not to have a DEI involved at all. Some of your small communities, they didn't see the need for it and couldn't afford it. So that was quite contentious, and when you start getting amendments and amendments to the amendment, and people getting upset, it was, it was long. Resolution five, mass school building authority, that resolution passed. Resolution, school bus stop, surveillance act and enforcement penalty, that was tabled. Resolution seven, related to MCAS, that was tabled. And resolution eight, safe storage of firearms, that was passed. So the, what the resolution committee and the delegates are voting on these resolutions for are people who go to the State House to try and get these resolutions made into law. So it was very interesting this year.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item I'd like to bring up for discussion is the user fee for athletes, and it actually did not make an action item for, to vote on tonight, so we'll have to add that to the next school committee agenda for a vote. But a few weeks ago, Mr. Roach and I were meeting with Mr. Robbins, our new athletic director, and he has been going and reviewing all the policies related to the athletic department being a new athletic director. And one of the things that he brought up was the charging of athletic fees to our students. So we went back, and Mr. Roach and I did some homework and looked at exactly how much money are we bringing in as a district for fall, for winter, and for the spring season? And we went back and looked, and we are only bringing in the students that actually are required to pay because of not some type of financial hardship, is very small. So over the last few years, specifically last year, we only brought in $15,000. So having that conversation, we went to resource subcommittee last week or the week before?
Last week.
To talk about this, and they voted to bring this to the school committee for discussion. It is my recommendation as superintendent that we move forward with waiving the athletic fees for all students, especially in our district, having the needs of our students and families, and looking at what we've collected in the past, only $15,000. I feel this is something that we should move forward with doing. Mr. Yu.
Quick question. The fees that are collected, do they go into a general fund, or are they allocated for a specific line item?
They go into the athletic revolving account. So I think to Superintendent Thompson's point, the timing is great. So first of all, I think if we, if the school committee decides to waive the user fee process for, for student athletes, then we would be able to certainly utilize Student Opportunity Act funds. This is absolutely a Student Opportunity Act category, or, there's 21 different items in Student Opportunity Act, and adding and enhancing opportunities for students to participate in extracurriculars is one of them. And, and so the other timing factor that works out well is with the Crocker Field Project set to proceed, in the fall, we'd be able to utilize the newly installed field for more practices, which would eliminate the need for us to contract with GameOn, which we're currently doing. Just in the fall, it was $18,000. So right there, it's almost a wash and a loss by removing what is still, I consider to be potentially an obstacle for some students and families, who might see that and say, "You know what, I don't even, I'm not even gonna bother to play." So you never pick them up in data points at all, because the decision is made, there's a user fee, we can't do that. So I think, again, as, as, I know the school committee has done over and over and over and over again, is think about ways to equalize opportunities for every student. Again, whether you want to play a sport or not, that's really ultimately a decision made by someone, but I would hope that it's not made before they even step on a field, because, "Oh, there's a user fee, I can't do it."
So my other question, do you have documented numbers or information where a student says, "I'm not gonna play because I don't have it"?
We don't have that? That's something that we could possibly do a survey and collect?
Because I would like to, you know, at some point, know the information before I say, "No fees." Because I think sometime we underestimate, you know, as a community, who says, "Well, up, it's a poor community, nobody's gonna pay." You know, so if we say that, and we wipe the responsibility out, and not saying, "Okay, we're not gonna say you pay 100 bucks, but maybe you can do 20." Or a payment plan, you know, that certainly teaches them about, you know, building credit or whatever, some kind of teaching moment in there. But I definitely caution, you know, us saying, "You know what, we're 80% poor community, we're just gonna wipe it out, and we're not just gonna charge anyone." I would, you know, I would caution against that, and kind of, you know, maybe it's on a sliding scale, I don't know, something, something, maybe we can brainstorm and figure out something, but just wiping it out completely, I don't, I don't, I don't know about that right now. I don't know if I would support that.
I guess, I'm against the user fees, and I think we, Mr. Yu, I think we should wipe them out completely. One of the things it showed when we went to the free lunch, particularly at the high school level, I forget the number now, but the count jumped about 10%, because people were not asking, high school kids were not asking for free and reduced lunch forms, they would not ask. But once everybody got it free, it increased by about 10%. The other thing is, I don't think we, we should be trying to raise money to be paying for the police on Thanksgiving, the referees for basketball games or football games, and I've talked with Mr. Roach extensively on this, I think, and I've been asking the athletic director for the last few years, and finally, we need an athletic budget, so we do not have to raise money to pay these fees. It should be, all kids are entitled to these extracurricular activities that we provide, and it can be included right in our, our budget. And there, there are monies that the, they raise for the revolving fund, and they could be used for unexpected expenditures, especially if our teams win tournaments or go to tournaments, something that comes up that we want to do. But we should have a school budget that supports everything that we need, in not asking people to be coming up with extra money. That's, that's my feeling.
I'd just like to ask, are you speaking of each and every sport, boys and girls' sports?
Yes.
And then looking across at the other activities in the schools, is it, is there a fee for music instruments that kids use?
Yeah, it would be all activities, Rosemary, all student activities would, would.
I think that'd be remarkable.
Not just sports.
Yeah, I think this is something our, our community can care for our, our children, you know?
Yeah, we should have it in our budget, that. Yeah, we should have it in our budget that takes care of, you know, whether it's music.
Because we've kind of prided ourselves in Pittsburgh that we've kept up the odds.
Yes.
Through thick and thin. And it's failed or, or not been as hardy in, in some places. But we've always, no, that's a, an important component to the children's education. So I think I would be, and from what I've heard so far, I think I would be in favor of that.
Mr. Walsh.
As a member of the resource subcommittee, I do believe that that committee, the committee was in favor of eliminating the user fees.
Correct.
For, for activities. And, and I agree with Ms. Reynolds and Mr. Stevens. I think although we don't have specific cases, I, I think anecdotally, anecdotically, there probably are students who don't want to ask for a waiver or don't consider participating just because they don't want to have to ask their parents, you have to come up with X amount of dollars. And I think it would be a good thing to not have that barrier there for students to be able to participate. And in light of what Mr. Thompson said, the amount of money that has been received and what would need to be offset by eliminating this isn't, isn't a large amount of money. And, and as Mr. Stevens said, there should be a budget and not have, in essence, have student fees cover the cost for referees or officials or transportation. So I would be in favor of this when it comes up before the entire school committee.
Mr. Hughes?
Again, I would, I would agree with you, with my colleagues, if the superintendent and his staff can present that it's a problem. If, if they cannot present, we've had over five years, 100 kids that says, well, I cannot play because I didn't have a user fee. Right? If we don't have that data, then it's very difficult to say, well, just wash it out and assume that it's a problem. You know, if, if, if we don't have that information documented, then I think we ought to, you know, take our time before. Because you know why, and I'll say this. I caution myself against the word free. It's a very dangerous word. When, when we says, oh, we're going to wipe it out and we're just going to make it free for all kids. Well, it's not free. It's not free for all kids. And, and so we need to start, you know, as some kind of way, start holding our kids accountable again for being responsible. Even if it's $10, even if it's five bucks, if it's something, you know, say, no, you can't do five, you, you can't do 100, but we want you to participate. You know what I mean? And, and make a sacrifice and do that. Start, start back again teaching that, you know? And I'm not, and please don't get me wrong. I'm, I'm, I'm an advocate for supporting our kids and making sure that we don't eliminate or exit anyone out because they cannot afford it. But if, if, if we have not had that, that issue, again, I would, I would say let's delay it and give the superintendent and Mr. Roach an opportunity to come back and say, over, over the last three years, we have had 200 kids that says, hey, I just didn't want to participate. But I was at the school, at Pittsburgh High, almost 15 years. And I never heard a kid say they wasn't going to play because of a user fee. You know, the coaches found, they found a way to make it happen. Or if the kid didn't have it, they didn't stop him from playing. He just, you know, wouldn't have participated, so.
I played, when I played Pittsburgh High School, there were no fees. And so it wasn't free. The word wasn't even used.
Right.
It was just part of the curriculum. And they wanted to play football, basketball, baseball, or track, whatever it was, you did. In 1981, when we passed Prop 2 and 1/2.
Right.
And there was no money left. Then they, how are we going to have athletics? And that's when the fees started coming in. You also have kids that, you know, if it's $100, you know what? I'll be number 14 on a 15 on the basketball team. I don't think I'm going to go out. I don't think, you know? All the, I mean, you, how many kids are on the football team? You're only going to use about 30 of them in a game. And there are probably 70 kids out there. But if they were all paying, you know, and I, when I was coaching, it was, well, I'm paying, my kid should play. So I, again, I just think it should be part of the curriculum and open to everybody, all of our, anything that we do at any of our schools.
Mr. Roach?
Yeah, just to clarify too, I think it's an excellent point that Mr. Hughes is making around. We want to make sure people are, have an investment in what they're doing, 100%. I think what we do have for data now is approximately 80 to 100 students, families will participate, will contribute the user fee per season. So fall, winter, spring. Two-thirds have it waived already. So, so the group, the, the group that is paying currently now would be those, you know, theoretically that can pay, so to speak, that might not have the low income designation at, at that point. So as I look at it, and I think it's a great point around if there's a way to, to gather further information, you know, if there was no user fee, would you be more inclined to participate in an extracurricular of any sort? You know, athletics, music, robotics is a great example of another one we saw today. I think the thing that, that, as I see it, and I saw it when I was principal at Pittsburgh High, was it's already waived for two-thirds to three-quarters of the students already. It really doesn't fund the athletic program. The athletic budget right now is 103,000 in the actual operating budget. And that doesn't include the, the coaches stipends and, and that type of thing. The revolving fund also is utilized for additional items like new uniforms, helmets, different types of things that are required, you know, every year. You have to kind of go on a cycle. I, I look at advocating for eliminating it solely from the perspective of, we're doing it to a great degree already. This just makes it more official and eliminates that idea that possibly there are those students out there who in their minds just say, you know what? Like Mr. Stevens mentioned too, I, I might not be a starter. I think I'll just get a job instead. I think we saw from three kids today, the power of a team, whether it's a football team, whether it's a robotics team, whether it's the Spring Musical, those types of teams, you know, I, I would say to, to many of the players that I play, that coached when I coached a sport was, not many of us are going to the NFL. But the, but the value of the, of the participation and what we learn from that will catapult you to many opportunities in your life and will help you in many ways in your life. And, and again, as I look at it now, we're doing so much of that already. This is just almost a symbolic measure around that all means all and the opportunities are there. And if there's any obstacle at all, it's removed. And, and again, I respect what you say, Mr. Hughes, always, and, and understand that you're looking for more information about that. And, and it's understandable.
I think Mr. Roach really pretty much answered my question. It says two-thirds of them are receiving that designation.
Two-thirds to three-quarters.
So that's, that's, I mean, that's, that's some.
And like he said, it's the people who, who are currently, so to speak, can't afford it, that's who's paying. All right, thank you. And so what I'll do is I will come back on December 4th with some more information and we'll bring this up for a vote. Okay? I appreciate the feedback and discussion on this topic. Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Roach, do you mind reviewing our budget timeline for this year and review our donations and grants?
Yep. So you should have in your packet, but I have extras if, if not, a proposed FY '25 budget calendar. It starts really in December. I might shed a tear at that idea. I'm joking, of course. Looking forward to actually getting the, the rates established for the foundation budget. That really drives the, the Pittsburgh Public Schools overall budget. So we should have some rate, rate information from the Department of Ed. Last year, it was around mid-December, late December that they set those. And with our foundation enrollment, we should be able to get a good sense of what, what our budget number will be for fiscal year '25. This budget calendar moves through a number of our school, school committee meetings and certainly the resource subcommittee meeting. It escalates our voting timeline to the first school committee meeting for approval in May, as opposed to the first school committee meeting in June. Two reasons for that would be, the governor is in place now, so there won't be as great a need to extend the mass state budget beyond March. It, it was released much later in the spring last year and where Governor Healy is in place and installed in that position now. We should have numbers much sooner than that. And then also, if approving in May, many towns and communities in their town meeting vote the school budget in the first meeting in May. So this puts, puts Pittsburgh Public Schools in a very competitive place to be able to offer the position to candidates, knowing the budget has been approved, just like communities across the state who use that first town meeting in, in the month of May. So I see it as, as it helps us competitively in the hiring process to have the great, the best candidates before us, be able to actually offer that position and, and have that offer followed up with an actual contract. And secondly, there isn't as great a need to extend out as noted because the governor is in place already.
Any questions on the budget timeline?
I could, I could just, one comment. I'd just like to thank Mayor Dean Attali for many years that he has always tried to exceed the foundation budget and give us a little bit extra. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, donations.
So there are several donations to consider for, for acceptance and they should be in your packet as well. The first one, which is an action item as well as the approval of donation of 100 prom dresses for the Princess Boutique at Pittsburgh High School. That is, I want to thank Audi Rivera and the Multicultural Club. They do a great job of making sure that everybody has an opportunity to have access to a very costly item like that. And, and the dresses will be given to students for free. And Lunenburg Ledger Newspapers is to thank for, for that donation. In addition, following action item 23-320 is to approve the donation of 130 gently-used coats and jackets for students in need. And that donation was made by Pittsburgh Board of Health and Luisa Fernandez helps to, to set that up so that families have access to that, particularly during the enrollment process, but really as needed in the community. So those are two donations. I can continue on with the grants if, if you'd like. There's also several, I think there's just the.
Just one.
One, yeah, one grant to accept. And that is the Targeted Assistance Grant. And that would be for Long Show Middle School and McKay Elementary School. And that would help them accelerate their progress that they're making towards their accountability status. And that is a Department of Ed grant in the, in the amount of $50,000. Stop there if you want to consider prior to the, the policy or move right into that.
Guys have any questions on those items?
Appreciate the generosity.
Yeah, no, those are great donations.
And then lastly, the policy item 5712, the physical restraint policy. We discussed this last time. There was a couple wording changes that we needed to make based on changes in the law. So those, we went over last time. So that's up for a second reading tonight. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Wish to take up and bundle 23-319 up through and including 23-322? Make a motion. Motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded to bundle those items. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made, made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, as you may notice. Thank you. We're now taking up the final item, the appointment of the interim superintendent Jonathan Thompson as the permanent superintendent of schools. Ms. Reynolds, this was your proposal?
Yes, it was.
Would you like to speak on this?
I, I would. I'm very glad to speak. I'm, I think that we have a, a gem in our, in our current interim superintendent because he has, he has vast experience in teaching. Not only the experience, he has the love of teaching and the love of seeing the children learn. But he doesn't only love children, he loves the teachers. And he can work and cooperate with the teachers and with the school committee. And I think we need this so badly in our times. I know, I'm very grateful for, for his attention, for his job. So I think we have the experience. I think we would save money and we need to save money, if we can, to have him be appointed. Should we look elsewhere, interview? Anybody that came in would have a learning curve that we can't afford that time when we have an excellent professional ready to go, set to go at me. So I, I gladly said, let's get going because we have a lot to do here in Pittsburgh to educate our children.
I'll second that.
Was, was that a motion?
Yes, motion to.
More discussion.
I can turn it into a motion.
I'll second the motion. You can still have discussion. Dr. Knight?
I am going to insist. I mean, I don't disagree with, you know, some of what my colleague Rosemary was saying. But for a system such as the one like this here in Pittsburgh, I insist that we need to find a superintendent that is a representation of the student body of our school. It's so important. And I think we should not lose this golden opportunity to seek a superintendent that is more a representation of the student body here. We are up to 76% of students of color in the district and we need a superintendent that is representative of that population. That is what I have to add.
Any further discussion? Mr. Walsh?
So during the debate that was held for the school committee candidates, at that debate, I said that, and, and I had the same discussion with interim superintendent Thompson about this, that my feeling is that there should be a search. And it's no reflection at all on Mr. Thompson's qualifications, his experience. And if, please let me finish, Mary, tonight. But I just think that there should be a, a search. And I, and the search would allow us to open the search up for anybody who might be interested and that we would hire a qualified candidate. And I, I appreciate everything that John, Mr. Thompson has been doing. And as I said, it's no reflection at all on his skills or expertise. I just feel that there should be a search and, and there.
I have seconded the motion and I'd call for a vote.
Have a, have a, just have a comment real quick.
More discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the, the appointment. However, I would also ask us to reflect upon the efforts that Mr. Thompson has made in term of diversifying his staff. So that says to me that he is making a conscious effort to hear the concerns that the minority community has. And so, so I, I would definitely, you know, be in favor of, of the appointment. Now, that being said, I, I just want to make sure we're not, we're not just putting on the Russian, some, making a rush judgment. You know what I mean? Rushing in. I'm very confident that if we did decide to wait, that he would still continue to do a great job in, 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 in doing it. But if we decide to vote tonight, then either way, I'm, I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd, I'd like to offer my, my input into this. We've always had the issue with the prior superintendent, the issue with the Pittsburgh Education Association, either spoken or just implied, was that that individual lacked certain skills, certain experience, I should say, as a classroom teacher, as a principal, and things of that nature. All of which are achieved by Mr. Thompson, who has been a classroom teacher and a principal, who just enjoyed a. teacher and a principal, who just enjoyed a, actually, I think I would go so far as to say a glowing assessment of your performance to date and the fact that you get along well with everyone, particularly the, the FEA. So also, my concern would be the timing of this. If we don't do this, then we're looking at a, a job search that's going to really garner very little, few candidates, I mean, at this particular time in the year. So we're going to have to wait till the spring or the summer, you know, to get.
Why? Why not now?
Appreciable candidates. But I think, I think we have the person right here before us. So let's move forward and take, take this to a vote. I make the motion. We move questions. Motion made to appoint interim superintendent Jonathan Thompson as the permanent superintendent of schools.
We have, we have a roll call vote?
Yeah, a roll call vote, okay.
Before you move on, this has been a practice here in Pittsburgh Public Schools.
It's out of order.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Mayor Dean Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
No.
Mr. Horgan is absent. Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
No.
Mr. Hughes? We have four yes, two no, and one absent.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations, I'm happy.
Let's all get it. Let's all get it. Why not? Don't stand up again, let's try that again.
So, very awkward when you're in the room. And people are talking about you. May, may I address the committee, Mayor?
Please.
You know, Jim, I do respect that, you know, your comments around, you know, doing a search. I, I respect that, there's no hard feelings against that, I understand what you, where you come from.
I look forward to working with you as superintendent.
Completely, I, I appreciate that. And Dr. Knight, I will continue to work on diversifying our, our teaching staff and making sure that we do have the faculty that do represent our students and look like our students. You know, one of the first moves that I did make was hiring Dr. Glenda, Dr. Mrs. Glenda Cologne, sorry, not yet, not yet. I got the Cologne. And, you know, Glenda, every day, makes sure that the decisions that I make for students are, are making sure that we are keeping the, the equity of our students in mind. So, you know, I'm going to make sure I surround myself with, with staff that not only represent our students, but are there to, you know, support them and make sure that we are doing the best to support them in their education.
I could make one more comment. When we were at the Cape, Dr. Jackson, in the general session, commented Pittsburgh for the work they were doing, from Dr. Jackson. Motion for adjournment. Second? That's right, no need for executive session, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion for adjourn.
Second? Motion made and seconded adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.